With these state board charters as a whole group, and I believe it was in July or June. And we are going to do that two times a year now to bring this group of schools together to begin doing some training things, sharing what works and what doesn't work. I think you have to remember the thing about these schools is that they are fairly isolated from their districts and county offices, and we are really their major resource for navigating our bureaucracy as well as doing everything else. So, we hope to be able to work with them more closely this year.
I have a question. Are there any charter schools that were approved by this board that haven't opened yet?
Yes.
Okay.
There are two that are scheduled to open next fall.
And if some of you are counting, we did have nine, and we're moving down in that Oakland Military Charter has recently become chartered by the Oakland School District. So, that is no longer a state board chartered school.
Excuse me. Is that a goal that these state-run charters would be eventually run by the district or the county office that they're closest to?
Well, the reason the state board approved them in the first place is because they were turned down by both the district and the county office. And the law requires that they go back to a district upon renewal before they can go back to the state board to have the charter renewed. And I think the thinking was that by the time a school had been existence for three years or five years, as the case may be, and had proven themselves that maybe the district would be more likely to approve them the second time around. So far, in our limited experience with the Ridgecrest Charter School, that has not proved to be true at all.
But in the Oakland one, it was.
Right, the Oakland case.
Right, right. But I think, yes. But I think ideally, they should be approved at the local level, and they have, the districts have much more in the way of resources to support them and make sure that they can successfully operate, so.
Though, just as a point of information, that you have before you on this agenda some statewide charter regs, which is different than the types of charters that Deborah is describing right now. And those are to be operated because there's a statewide benefit, and the goal there would not necessarily be to place them at a local level. So, they'll be a little bit a different type of school.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. Okay. Marta Reyes, are you here? Marta's going to give us a report on the California Charter Academy.
Good morning. Notice that I let Deborah do the fun things. I also wanted to say that when we brought the all charter, the state board charters together, we also made a commitment to do the same to the all charter districts that have been under discussion. And that is also a state board. When a charter has all of its schools become chartered, they have to respond then to the state board. So, we felt in due oversight that we should also bring those groups together, and there are five or seven of those right now. And so, we did the same kind of a meet and greet, and asked what kind of support we could give, and asked what innovative things they're doing. So, it is our plan throughout the course of the year to give you updates on those kinds of informational meetings and provide you with some data to better serve your clients. California Charter Academy is proof that the laws are working. The Advisory Commission to the State Board on Charter Schools met in March and after much deliberation and not being presented with data that could substantiate anything but real concern, they recommended to the State Superintendent Jack O'Connell to do an audit and investigation. He supported that, and we began that audit investigation, working with the two counties in the regions that the original three schools were involved. The county offices have become part and parcel of this audit investigation, and it's giving us great data to begin to look at what we can do in the future so that this doesn't happen. Currently, that audit investigation is proceeding. In fact, it has expanded to include three of the organizational interests of that group, not only the California Charter Academy schools and their many satellites, but also the for-profit management company, as well as a joint powers authority that had convened to provide a better way to get benefits for its teachers and employees, but had not paid into the benefit packages for those employees. So, when the school closed two weeks before school started, we not only had 10,000 to 11,000 students with needs to be taken into general public schools and/or charter schools, we also had employees that found themselves without benefit coverage. It was an incredibly challenging situation. So, we put the best practices forward, and we called the county superintendents and gave them information about the student populations in each of their regions, and asked them to contact their local schools, charters, and traditional schools, and embrace those students coming in. And part of the challenge was the transferability of credits as high school students. These were non-accredited programs, so when they went to enroll at their local school, not necessarily were they going to be given the status of quote junior that they thought they were. And so, we've been spending untold hours working with the different districts and counties, and they have been phenomenal. They have reached out, they've embraced the kids, and they have worked to the best of their ability to mitigate some of the challenges that have been part of this. That investigation is continuing. We anticipate in early, or probably mid to late October, we will have some kind of a report from NGT, which is Management of America, who is the subcontractor for FICMAT, who's doing the actual audit investigation. All of the assets that have been identified in the student records have been protected. Snowline School District, which is one of the sponsoring school districts, has made room for them, and the other districts are in the process of gathering up the materials from across the state of California. This was a charter that started in three small, well, two, a small district in, two small districts in San Bernardino, and one larger one in Orange County, but they had sites all the way up to Butte. So, later today, we'll be, or I guess tomorrow, we'll be talking about a waiver to be able to support some of those students under this emergency situation, and I'll give you an update at that point. Questions? Any questions?
I guess, I don't know if it's a question or, at any rate, I guess my concern is the lessons that we all are going to learn from this, both on the state level and also on the county level where they were probably overseeing some of this and having to take in the students. What we can learn from this in terms of any kind of future endeavor that might fail as this one has.
Absolutely. And I think the legislation that's in place now, both 1137 and 1994 with restrictions, keeping it more local, not allowing an organization such as this one to spread, and looking more appropriately at the performance indicators. They were 1-1 schools. And this had been a concern of the State Department as far back as 1999 and 2000.
But they were constantly renewed their charters?
They, two of them had been renewed.
They had?
Yeah.
Even with those performances?
Well, that's just recent performance, yeah. And so, that's the teeth that's going to, as Reed said, begin to hold authorizers accountable to look at this.
What used to happen, Ruth, is you'd get a small school district, which would be tight on budget, and they would authorize charters all over the state, take 5% or 10% off the top, build a gymnasium, treat their voters and their kids very well, pay minimal attention. And we noticed this four years ago. And two years ago, three years ago, we got a bill passed in 1994 that was very controversial. But what we did is there was no basis, it was perfectly legal what they were doing. Okay? So, there was no basis for the department, or the board, or anyone else to act. And we recognized the hole in the law, and proactively got this law passed in 1994, which limited this long-distance chartering. And that's what took effect now, because, you know, we gave it some grandfathering period. That, and another one was adult education, which is a great thing, but it's just not funded by the legislature at the K-12 level.
Right.
So, those two cleanups we did. And this is, now we're seeing the cleanups that the department has the legal force to do, that they didn't have the legal force to do before. So, that's why I'm saying it's the sign that the things we put in place in the past were necessary, appropriate, and are working now. And we're continuing within the charter movement to figure out what future problems might crop up that we want to anticipate, because, you know, we recognize that that's an important part of the political dynamic.
You mean the crystal ball?
And that's why the process we set up is so important when we grant these charters and funding and all that. So, it's important that we follow the rules that we put in place.
Absolutely.
Okay. Housekeeping item, I'm sorry, Marta, I just want to jump in on this. I want to let people know that the November meeting, 9th and 10th of November, is a Tuesday and a Wednesday. Given a sheet of paper to clear this up right away, so just with that in mind. Thank you, Marta. Okay, moving on. Ray, I'd like you to take this, this budget change proposal.
What I'd like to have staff explore is whether or not the duties imposed on the board under the new Williams legislation would justify additional staff for the board. My gut feeling is that it does not, because in essence, it's going to fall most directly on the department, as well as some other agencies like the Office of Public School Construction. However, there are some significant duties for the board as well. So, because you don't meet again until November, what I'd like is authorization to have the staff take a look at that, and to the extent that we can justify an additional position that we meet what's called a BCP or Budget Change Proposal Timeline, to put that request into the Department of Finance. So, that's what the motion would be. I'm usually relatively tight on money, and so I suspect that we will not do it, but I just wanted the opportunity to take a look at it.
Motion by Bonnie, seconded by Ruth. Okay, all those in favor of the budget change proposal to explore and prepare just despite a budget change proposal to fund additional board staff due to increased workload related to the Williams settlement? All those in favor? Okay? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. We are on to, here we are, into public comment. Deborah, do we have anyone, any speakers at all? Okay. No one out there, everybody's happy with that, okay. Okay, good. Then we are on to item three, and this is our seminar about Educating English Language Learners in California. Substantive discussion. And we have Sue Stickel, and this will take approximately an hour.
Good morning. This presentation, when you talk about the English language learner population in California, there's a whole host of topics that we need to cover. And so, in this next hour, we're going to give you a little taste of a few things. And we tried to narrow down our list from 50 to seven different topics, and so there's a relief on that part. We have, you may in fact decide after this presentation that you want further information, and we're happy to make that happen for you as you desire. This morning, we're going to talk about the English language learner landscape, provide you some background and information. And you may be looking at the presentation, and you're thinking, oh, my God, there's 69 slides. But, some of the slides are there for you as a continued resource. We will touch just lightly on some of them, some of them we'll spend a little bit more time on. We're going to talk about a state and federal perspective when it comes to English learners, and talk a little bit about the dual education goals. We will cover the issues of credentialing and instructional materials, assessment, accountability, and state compliance monitoring, and technical assistance. We're very fortunate in the department in that we have four outstanding experts to present to you this morning. The people that you will hear from are Jan Mayer, who is the manager of the Language Policy and Leadership Office, Tom Adams, who's the director of the Curriculum Frameworks and Instructional Resources Office, Lori Burnham, who is the manager from the English Learner Accountability Unit, and Deb Sigmund, who is the director of Standards and Assessment. So, at this point, what I'd like to do is turn over the presentation to Jan.
Thank you, Sue.
Good morning. And before we get started, I want to take an opportunity to thank you for asking us to come and address this very important topic, Educating English Learners in California. And as Sue Stickel mentioned, the packet you have before you is a result of collaborative efforts from across several branches in our department, and it was difficult to narrow down the topics that we'd addressed this morning. And what we think we're doing is providing you a survey or an overview of many of the key topics, and we'll be moving very quickly through some of the slides, so you can rest assured. And we'll be spending a bit more time on some of the topics that have more information going on behind them. So, it's really the who, what, when, where, how, and why for English learners in California. And on to the landscape. It's good to start with the who. Who are the English learners in California, and how many do we have? Well, we just completed the last language census, and we have 1,598, 484 English learners in California. That translates into one out of every four students in our classrooms being limited in their listening, speaking, reading, or writing, in English as their second or their new language. So, they're the norm, not the exception to the rule in our California classrooms. We've been conducting a language census, which is an actual count of all English learners since the late '70s, so you can get a good picture over the past decade or so. Many languages are spoken by our English learners, but predominantly, English learners come from Spanish-speaking backgrounds, with 85% coming from there. Then we move on to many of our Southeast Asian languages, Vietnamese being the next largest, then Mong, Cantonese, Filipino, Korean, Mandarin, Khmer, Punjabi, and of course, all others. That's the combination of all the other language groups that we do have. So, when you see programs and organizations for services, you will, you will hear more about Spanish when we're talking statewide, but depending upon the local community that we're looking at, the distribution of English learners will be different. And a quick look at the distribution across the grade levels, you can see that about 70% almost of English learners are enrolled in grades K through 6, but that means that slightly over 30% are enrolled in our secondary schools, and they bring with them various issues that we need to address as well. So, if you've heard the myth that all English learners start school on day one in kindergarten, now that one can be dispelled. This slide is an attempt to discuss the different profiles of English learners. It's quite a diverse group, it's not monolithic at all. And if you look at the horizontal line, that represents a continuum of English language proficiency with a beginner over on your left and advanced over towards the right. And the vertical line would be academic achievement level, with the very top representing at or above grade level, and the bottom being not at grade level at this particular point in time. Now, the numbers I'm going to put on the screen shouldn't be plotted or looked at in any kind of a sequence. What they are are just samples, a way to focus our attention, discuss each of these different types of English learners, if you will. So, number one, down there in the lower left-hand corner, beginner in English, beginner in school, actually is very representative of many of the kindergarteners. A lot of the kids that start school with us, they're new to English, and they're new to schooling. This is at the beginning of the year. However, I need to point out that a number one could also represent many of our late-entry immigrant students who come to us at higher grade levels with little or no prior schooling, and they're also new to English. So, we have to make accommodations for them as well as we're planning and implementing our programs. A two could also represent someone who's new to English, usually a late-entry immigrant student, but this particular student is on grade level in their own language. This student may come to us already having been to school for many years, and so they're going, their path of learning is going to go a bit quicker than someone who has no English and no schooling. Number three just shows someone along their way to English proficiency. The student would be at an early-intermediate or intermediate level in terms of English, and beginning to be able to demonstrate what they know and are able to do on norm-referenced or standardized testing systems. So, they're not there yet, but they're moving along. And so, we'll see them as part of the information when we look at test scores, for example. Not everyone's fluent yet, so we have all kids contributing to the mix. A four, for example, would be someone really moving along in their English proficiency, but they're not at grade level yet. And we do have students in this category that we really need to focus on academic English and plan appropriate services and programs for those students as well. And five would be more of a goal, or an initial goal, if you will, for where we want to start, get students to when we start reconsidering if they're ready for reclassification. That would be they're at the early advanced or advanced level in English, and they're somewhere between basic, mid-basic, and on their way up to proficient and advanced at some point in the future in terms of their academics. Now, these are just ways of pointing out that this is not a monolithic group. We have to take into consideration where our students are in terms of learning English, as well as learning academics when we plan and implement our programs. A little history lesson here.
Just one thing, I'd like to encourage board members to ask questions as we go along, so I'm sorry, I did want to say that. So, if you have something you want to talk about, let's do that rather than taking all of the questions at the very end, okay?
I was going to say no questions, but no, I'm just kidding.
Overruled.
All right, all right. Okay. Okay. Answers too are very welcome. Just to let you know that the programs for English learners are not a new thing. This is not a new group. We look back to the early '70s. But quickly going through, you know, at the federal level, in the 1960s, we had the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which likely stimulated the beginning of programs also in California. These were discretionary and experimental bilingual programs, and none other than Ronald Reagan signed these into law. 1976 was really the first organized framework of services for English learners, including taking a language census, identifying, reclassifying students, having bilingual services when appropriate for certain groups of students, and having teachers that are authorized to work with them. It was amended and came back as AB 507 in 1980. And along with many other laws, AB 507 was allowed to sunset or otherwise terminate in 1987. But the interesting thing about sunset, we always call it twilight, because the program really remains intact, the intents and purposes of the law remain intact as long as there's a funding mechanism. So, a lot of complex combinations of state and federal court case and statute law defined how programs were articulated in the late '80s until Proposition 227 was passed in 1998 by the voters of California. And we'll highlight a little bit about what that, what that actually means. At the federal level, as we mentioned, the 1960s brought us ESEA, and they brought us Title VII, or the Bilingual Education Act nationally. And 2001 was reauthorized, reauthorization of ESEA, No Child Left Behind, an important new program, the first time really articulated required services for English learners at the national level that weren't just based on discretionary funds or competitive grants came out, and that is Title III. We'll be talking a little bit more about how that played out with assessment and accountability. As I mentioned, there are complex combinations of state and federal law and court cases and so forth. At the state and national level, essentially, they require meaningful opportunity to participate, equal educational opportunity, and so forth. But we won't go through each and every one of these today, but there are many things, legal foundations for us. And then we move into a really important slide that has ties throughout the rest of this presentation, and what we do with English learners in California and at a national level, by the way, is that we have dual educational goals. We don't just want kids to meet academic standards, we also want them to become proficient in English. So, both of these notions are infused throughout everything that we'll talk about today, resources, teacher preparation, assessment, accountability, program monitoring, and so forth. But we always have to keep these dual goals in mind.
Can I make a point here? Our academic standards are actually not language standards or something abstract, they're English language standards. So, in fact, it's a little bit redundant, because to meet these state academic standards, you are fluent in English, at least on a testing, you know, not necessarily orally, since we don't do that at all in the testing system. And so, you'll see this theme throughout this attention, because to some degree, the academic skills are separable from English, and to some degree, they're not. And that underlying tension in your view on that shapes, you know, I think, the lens at which you look at a lot of this information.
Yes, thank you. Those are important points that we'll talk a little bit more about as we look at assessment and accountability and resources, so you can see how the dual goals are met in various respects. And we move on to the how, or the implementation of programs for English learners. Just a quick clarification of what does Proposition 227 say? Again, that was passed into law in 1998 by the voters of California. It really allows for three different program options for English learners. The first is for students who have less than reasonable English fluency. And of course, Prop 227 is really written more as an essay or philosophical statement, didn't have legal language in it that is easy to implement. So, it'll say such things as students who have less than reasonable English fluency or a good working knowledge of English. So, we've had to operationalize that at the state and local levels, and it could vary place by place. But structured English immersion is for those initial levels of English learners, and it's the way to organize services for them moving into English language mainstream settings when the students have a good working knowledge of English. An option available for parents is an alternative program. And under this option, they could receive bilingual services for their students or for their children based on a waiver application process. And we'll just talk a teeny bit about each of those three. The structured English immersion, remember, was the first level of services. It is for English learners with less than reasonable English fluency, and the coursework during the school day is to be provided nearly all in English. So, some of it could be clarification with a bilingual pair professional or teacher if the students need access to the core curriculum in that way. It depends on how every district defines their program. But at a minimum, this program includes English language development instruction. You could actually focus on English language and move into academics at a later point in time under this program as well, as long as you have a plan to recoup any academic deficits. So, the core content would be delivered with some special scaffolding and strategies, and we call that SEDI, which is specially designed academic instruction in English. And sometimes, some primary language clarification or assistance will be provided within those classrooms. Parents always can request that their child be withdrawn from structured English immersion classrooms and placed in mainstream English classrooms. And I'll show you how many in just a moment there. Okay?
Do you have the [inaudible 00:07:56].
That's a perfect segue into about three slides away from here, so that wasn't a plan either.
Just before you move on, can you go back a slide?
Okay. There we go.
So, remember that Prop 227, that the structured English immersion was in a program, and I think, believe the language is not normally expected to last for more than one year. So, how does that tie with your last bullet?
Actually, students can be re-enrolled in structured English immersion, and there's no, there was no limit to the number of times that that could happen. So, really, they move into the English mainstream, and it's, they're still receiving the broad array of services, just in a different setting. So, as long as it takes them to become fluent, they're still going to receive services. But they could be re-enrolled in the structured English immersion setting for more than one year, if they need that.
I agree with you, that's what happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is.
Would you say SEDI program is designed to be a one-year?
No, no. SEDI isn't really a program. SEDI is a methodology. It's strategies that a teacher uses to help, to help scaffold the instruction, if you will, to help give meaningful access to the students so that they can understand what's going in the class. So, SEDI is really an instructional methodology or strategies. It's not a program.
Different word than scaffold, so it's clear what that means.
Some temporary instructional strategies that a teacher might use with students to help them understand the core curriculum. For example, when you're working with students at the beginning levels, you might need a lot more real objects, pictures, maps, and so forth, so that you can point to things, show them, have students acting them out, and so forth. Does that help?
And I have a question. The structured English immersion, has that been defined by the state? Is that, is there a variance in district to district greatly in how that's actually interpreted or taught?
There's considerable amount of local flexibility in defining what does structured English immersion mean, and you will find at the local level that it varies. As long as the program is nearly all in English, there will be variation. It could even be within schools in a district, depending again on the student population that you have. So, English language mainstream is really just the label for the students who do have a good working knowledge of English, still must be provided overwhelmingly in English. And you do have to make sure that content and language are included. are included in these types of models, okay? And lastly, the alternative program, which is typically a bilingual education program, would have English language development and primary language content area instruction. And it may also include, depending on the phase in the program where the student is on the continuum for learning English, it might have instruction taught through methodologies for the SEDI methodologies or those scaffolds that are used. And alternative programs are required to be offered when, at each school, when there's 20 or more pupils at a given grade level, receive waivers to go into that. So this is at the parent request. This is parent options, and we'll take a look at how many students are in those on our next slide.
Do we have any statistics as to whether that particular option works better than the other option?
We're going to talk about the Prop 227 evaluation in just a few minutes, and they do look at the various program models. But there's considerable research that will show that various program settings, when effectively implemented and with appropriate teachers and resources and so forth, that you can get some good results.
And can you go back one slide again? So you said these alternative programs are typically bilingual. What are the other cases?
Well, it just says that it typically would include a primary language instructional program.
I think of them as this is all the alternative.
I think they probably are.
Okay.
I was just saying, according to the law, it says that. We don't have a survey that says exactly what every district is doing. I think where it would vary is the amount of primary language instruction, and again, that would probably go along with the phase of the program that the student is in.
Most of the discussion or controversy is over which is the better approach. And that's why I was trying to get some kind of way of evaluating that.
Right, and, and this is a good point. And I think you want to go back to the slide that I had of the various kinds of English learners that we have, and that there's no one single approach that's good for everybody. You have to customize your programs according to what the community wants, what your student population is, what they already know and are able to do, and the resources that you have to get there. So there's not one, one magic bullet for this.
And Jan?
Didn't, I recall some wonderful data that I think you had presented to the board when we talked about the results on a CELT test and the AMAOs that we have to do under No Child Left Behind, having to do with English language proficiency. And as I recall, they were disaggregated by the type of instruction. Do you remember those?
Actually, I, I think that that came from the assessment office.
It might be useful to send that out as an information memorandum to the board so that they could see that broken down by instructional type. I think that would directly answer Don's question, okay?
Yeah, and it's important to remember that kids are in different phases of programs regardless of the settings that they're enrolled in, too.
In terms of proficiency levels, or not proficiency levels, in terms of where the different levels of children that arrived to school or have been in here a while, it seems to me that the bulk of them have English fluency. They can speak English, but where they, where they really have deficits is in the reading and writing of English. And then, of course, we have the level where students come in and they have low literacy levels in both languages, and then you have the other end where they're very well schooled and they have academic content and do very well in their native primary language, but they simply need to learn English. But it seems to me, in my experience locally, that the bulk is that, that great middle where they need proficiency in English reading and writing. Is that generally your sense, or?
Well, I think that they're, they're all the way along that continuum. It depends when you are in the school year and how long they've been here. But yes, they will develop, as you're mentioning, the listening and speaking skills ahead of the academic literacy skills in English.
Right, and as we discuss where these kids are and how long they've been in, in California, there are some that have been here for a while. And they have the ELD programs, and they have a lot of different things that school districts are trying very hard, and some are more successful than others. So that's.
And those are the kids, too, we're concerned about. We don't want them to fossilize or to stick at that intermediate level. We want to get the literacy skills developed so that they can move on.
Right, programmatically, we want to look at that, I think, very large group.
And it is, a lot of our kids do sit at that level, you're right.
That's correct.
So how, getting back to Ms. Bloom's question, how do, how do we see the enrollment patterns of kids in these various program options? Almost half, 47%, are in the structured English immersion settings. And this is reported annually on the language census, so it's a self-report by districts. Another 37% are in the mainstream English programs, and that means that they have a reasonable level of English proficiency according to their local.